I call to order the meeting of the Cleveland Heights University Heights City School District. Mr. Gainer, will you call the roll?
Ms. Wright.
Here.
Mr. Posh.
Here.
Mr. Heinz.
Here.
Ms. Serini.
Here.
Ms. Lewis.
Here.
All right, the first thing on our agenda is the approval of the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? No?
Nope.
Okay.
Pretty straightforward.
Pretty straightforward today.
Sure is.
Okay, then, Mr. Gainer, will you call the roll?
Mr. Posh.
Yes.
Mr. Heinz.
Yes.
Ms. Serini.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Ms. Wright.
Yes.
Okay, we will move on to our education services item on the agenda. Is there any introduction you want to make?
Sure, I am pleased to have our Metro Health partnership team here with us to give us an update on the work that's been happening in our district in Atha High School, so I'm going to turn it over to Nancy Pepler, our supervisor of community and social partnerships, to start this presentation and the introductions. Thank you all for joining.
Thank you, I'm excited to be here tonight and to share our first semester experience with the partnership with Metro Health, although as you'll hear throughout the presentation, this work has been going on for quite some time in planning for the clinic at the high school, and so I have a few guests with us this evening that are going to be part of the presentation. This is Vanessa Meyer. Vanessa, Dr. Meyer is a 1991 grad of Heights High and is the chief provider at the school-based health clinic, but also the chief medical officer for school-based health for Metro Health.
Cool.
Katie Davis, who is my main contact in terms of the partnership, could not be here tonight, she had a previous engagement. We also have Julie Cobb, who is the chief RN with us every time the clinic is open at the school, and you'll hear from Julie also. Rose Varselli is our Rose, our school nurse, Nurse Rose, as she's known to the students at Heights High, hopefully not to any of your students. She knew a couple of mine maybe, but... And Linda Rudy, Linda is joining us, she's the lead nurse for the district, and so she's here to participate in the conversation also. So I think Dr. Meyer is going to kick us off.
Okay, great, well, I just want to say thank you so much for being such incredible partners, we're really excited about this partnership, and as an alum, it's particularly fun for me to be at the high school every other Friday, so thanks for letting me be your doc. I want to get to just doing a brief overview of school health, so I know that we gave a presentation at the beginning of the pilot, and Katie Davis, our program director, was able to talk a little bit about school health. People do get confused when I talk about school health, so I'm going to talk about school health in general, and then talk about our perspective at Metro Health on school health. And then I'm going to have Nancy do sort of an update on where we are with our pilot programs throughout the year, talk a little bit about the needs assessment that was done. Then, we're really excited to hear from Julian Rose, who are the boots on the ground, who are making this program happen every day. And then we're going to talk about sort of what we're going to be doing moving forward throughout the year. So, I also want to acknowledge that we have Lisa... Susan Fuer and Brandt Silvers here from Metro Health, who are from our Population Health Institute of Hope, so thanks for coming, and I'm excited to have them here.
Welcome to you all.
I should also mention that Brandt Silver graduated with me in my class from Heights, so we are well represented here.
All right, once a tiger, always a tiger.
That's right. So, just briefly, people always get confused when I talk about school health, they think when some people talk about school health, we're talking about healthy kids in school. When I talk about school health, I'm talking about putting doctors right into schools. So it's healthcare delivery within schools, and that's not new, that's been around since there were schools. It seemed like to everybody that there was a good idea to have a doctor touch base with kids who are confined in small spaces. So, this is one of my favorite pictures about... From school-based health lore, and this is Margaret Thompson, who is a real champion of school-based health services. She was a nurse who was really instrumental in the development of early school-based health services, and I love this picture because it really highlights the team of the school-based health program. So Margaret's got her doc with her, but she's also got this team of professionals, and that's really important when we're talking about school-based health services in schools. We're seeing kids without parents, and we need to have a team that operates seamlessly together, so that's a great picture. School-based health centers really blossomed right at the beginning of the 1900s. Unfortunately, the AMA then stepped in and said, "That sounds an awful lot like government-supported healthcare, and we are not at all interested in that." So unfortunately, they launched a really successful effort to really try to squash that type of healthcare delivery in schools, and we saw the number of school-based health centers really decline dramatically. But, we're really seeing a resurgence, and it's probably because of new provider types, it's probably also because there's a lot of accountability measures now, both in education and in healthcare. We're all trying to show our value in terms of population health outcomes, and I think that those two forces have really combined to get healthcare partners and educational partners to the table to talk about how we can improve healthcare delivery in schools. So our national advocacy organization, the National Alliance of School-Based Health Centers, does an annual census of school-based health centers, and has seen an incredibly dramatic increase in the number of school-based health centers throughout the country. And I have to update my slides because these are old slides, but it continues on this sort of exponential growth, and it's because they work. So, school-based health centers have been associated with a number of improvements in both educational outcomes and health outcomes, so that's why people do it. We have a really strong history of school-based health centers in Ohio, so Cincinnati has been in the school-based health space for decades. They have a wonderfully robust school-based health service programs throughout Cincinnati, and some of you may be familiar with the Euler School Program. We're very jealous of their sort of financial framework that they have in Cincinnati, they have a wonderfully robust philanthropic arm with their partner, Interact for Health, that really provides the financial sustainability for a lot of their programs. They also have a really interesting program with the Cincinnati Health Department that provides a lot of financial support for the school nursing throughout Cincinnati Public Schools, so it's a really interesting model. Columbus is new in the game, so nationwide through their accountable care organization have been able to do some really exciting things in the school health space. We're really looking to them around their school-based asthma therapy program. So Partners for Kids, which is their accountable care organization, has funded that program because they can spend $500,000 on ensuring that kids get asthma medications in schools, and they can save upwards of $3 million on the reductions in emergency room and picky visits. So it's a really exciting model, and we're excited to see what our partners in Columbus do. We're also really excited about what's happening in Akron. So Akron Children's Hospital has the contract for the school nursing throughout Akron Public Schools, and they've this year launched their telehealth program in Akron, so we're really interested in telehealth at Metro, and we're going to be watching them really closely. I'm really excited about this model. They're going to have a nurse practitioner who's going to be available by telehealth to all of their nurses, and their nurses are going to be able to, if they have a child that needs that sort of next level of care, they're going to be able to telehealth into their nurse practitioners, so that's really exciting.
That's cool.
So here in Cleveland, this woman right here, Chrissy Alexander, my boss, the chair of the Department of Family Medicine, was really spearheaded the first school-based health center here in Cleveland in 2013. A lot of hard work, a lot of fundraising, really got school health off the ground here in Cleveland. And we now have a lot of really exciting partners in the school health space here in Cleveland. So, we did have Neighborhood Family Practice for a short period of time, that had a really exciting program from a population health perspective. They're the refugee processing center for the majority of the refugee resettling agencies, and they had a really exciting program at Thomas Jefferson Academy, which is our newcomers' school in Cleveland. They weren't able to make that fly financially, but we're excited about some new partners. Care Alliance is in the space with us. Cleveland Clinic, who's been doing a lot in the first string suburbs, is now going to be joining us in Cleveland, so we're excited. Metro has always leveraged their school-based health program as really a true population health program, so it's been a real focus on really just trying to improve access for students from the very beginning, and it has had a population health perspective from its inception. So we started our first clinic in 2013, we were excited to get a very large donation and be able to purchase a mobile unit in 2014, that dramatically expanded the program, and Chrissy really had her hands full and asked me to come and join in 2015. So, I was excited to come and be a part of this program. I was coming to Metro assuming that I was just going to show up at Metro and they were going to give me the list of all the kids that needed to be seen, and we were going to have all of our care coordination frameworks. When we talk about population health, in order to do population health, you have to have a registry or a list of all of the people who you're responsible for, and you have to be able to identify care gaps within that list, and then you develop a care coordination framework along that care gap, so that you can really minimize those gaps. So that's what we mean when we're talking about population health management. So when I first came in 2015, I was just thinking that I was going to get the list, and we're going to develop the care coordination frameworks, but it really actually took a lot of investment in clinical informatics to build the framework for our school health program to be successful. But, that work really pays off, and this was an evaluation of our program that we were able to do in collaboration with our partners at the Cleveland Alliance for Educational Research, as well as the Research and Evaluation Department at CMSD, showing that when you do this type of population health work, you really can meet your goals of improving population health metrics, reducing emergency room visits, improving access to preventive services, and then for educational partners and for ourselves, really being able to show substantial improvements in attendance for students who have access to our services. So if you Google "Metro Health School Health Program Evaluation Report," you'll be able to pull up our report and read through that. So we're always trying to compare ourselves to national benchmarks with our partners at the National Alliance of School-Based Health Centers. We're doing pretty well in terms of visit volumes, and I think that that's just the need of our population, we just are in a population that has a very big need, because we're only really seeing the tip of the iceberg, because we're not quite to our enrollment numbers where we would like to be. So enrollment is really a reflection of how many students that have access to our services, who are actually signed up for our services, so the number of students who have signed consent for school health program. In Cleveland, we're at about 50%, we wish we were at 70%, but Eric Gordon tells me that 70% is 100%, so I don't know. I guess I have to change my numbers, but... But we do know that the higher we can push that enrollment number, the more impact we're going to have. We are cost favorable, so compared to national averages, we certainly are meeting our cost metrics. We're very excited, we're meeting 30% of our expenses through billing, so that's a national benchmark, and we're excited to be meeting that. We do have the additional 70% of our program that we need to reach out to get funding for, but we're so grateful to our funders, we really have similar goals, and we're excited to be able to work with our funders who really believe in the investment of our program and know that we're making a difference. Okay, and now I'm going to let Nancy kind of talk about where we are with our pilot.
Okay, so I'm assuming you can hear me okay? So last year, last school year, we worked very closely on the needs assessment for the district. And this year is the launch of the primary care services, two days per month, and then at the end of this year, we'll be conducting the student and school satisfaction and evaluation surveys. And so the plans for future years will be based on our enrollment, on satisfaction, on the numbers from Metro Health, and the evaluation of the program.
Nancy, can I ask a question about this?
Sure.
Two days per month per school, or two days per month?
At the high school.
At the high school.
It's just at the high school.
I see, okay.
And it's basically every other Friday.
Because there had been a little bit of talk about visiting elementary schools periodically to do things like vision screenings and immunizations, is that still...
Well, we have the partnership with the Cleveland Clinic for the mobile unit at four of our elementary schools with the clinic, and the Cleveland Clinic also has the Vision Van program, where they will bring the van out to the elementary schools.
And is that just sort of on a, you know, a schedule, or is that something that happens regularly? Or is it something that we call when we feel there's a need?
It's something that is scheduled with the nurses. Sure, Linda, go ahead.
That's something that's scheduled with the only of the elementary nurses, because they only see preschool, kindergarten, and I think preschool, kindergarten, and first graders are the only kids that they see.
That the Cleveland Clinic Vision Van sees.
For the Vision Van, yeah.
Right. Versus the mobile.
And, but the mobile unit will see all the kids that are signed up for the program.
So last year, we conducted the needs assessment, so it was a combination of surveys and focus groups to three groups, to our students, to our families, and to our staff at the high school. So you can see the statistics here, we distributed the surveys electronically on the district website and through social media. We had, unfortunately, a low response from students, but a very good response from staff members and from parents and community members. You can see the small print in the little red boxes that even though we sent the survey out to the students through their district email, we believe that many of them thought that it was intended for their family members, so that people who opened a student survey took it and checked the box that they were a family member. So those responses were included in the parents and community member survey results that I'll be sharing. We did have three focus groups at the high school also, students, staff members, and parents and community members, and those were very rich conversations. I sat in two of them, I did not sit in the student one, because I felt that it would probably be a better conversation if somebody from the district wasn't sitting in the room, but they were conducted by the folks from Metro Health, I don't remember the name of the group, but that conduct your surveys. So, first of all, we had a lot of common findings through the focus groups and the surveys, and so the students, parents, and community, and staff all saw, for example, reproductive health as one of the top three most important items for health services. I personally was surprised to see that as a top response from parents and community. Was pleased about that, that they saw that as a top three need, so you can see those responses. The same thing happened with mental health, and this is one that's obviously very disturbing to me, very disturbing to anybody who works with young people, and obviously to our parents and to our staff. This was very consistent, there's a high level of concern, and this is nationally, this isn't just in our community, but a high level of concern about the mental health of our young people, yes?
Nancy, may I ask if the results were brought about by open-ended questions, or did you ask the participants to pick from a checklist?
Pick from a checklist, but it was extensive.
Okay.
I can share the survey with you, if you'd like that as a follow-up?
I'm just curious, because it's easy to generate the results you're looking for if you write the survey, you know, so it's... But if it's a long list, and there were lots of other things on there...
Yeah, it was extensive, but I'll be happy to share that with you.
Thank you.
The survey. In fact, if I can get the... If I can read the small print here, if three mental health care services could be addressed for students, if you could focus on three mental health care services to be addressed for students, what would they be? But it was a list.
That is shocking.
Yeah. Well, we can't forget, and I might get it a tiny bit wrong, but I don't think so, that the leading... Ohio recently shared, the Ohio Department of Health, that the leading cause of death for, is it seven to 14-year-olds, is suicide?
I want to say it was 11 to 14-year-olds. Eight to 14-year-olds.
Yeah. It's... And we know from...
Eleven to 14 is middle school.
From looking at the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, which is national, and we have some data from last year from our middle schools, that it's a very serious concern.
Yeah, in Cleveland, we're highest in the nation. Cuyahoga County, so the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, that's all Youth Risk Behavior Survey data, and our Director of Behavioral Health in the School Health Program at Metro Health, Lisa Ramirez, who you may have heard of, is doing quite a lot of really interesting work around this issue because of what we have been finding in our screening data. So as part of a national quality initiative in school-based health centers, we screen, and we'll talk a little bit about this, we screen all of our high school students for anxiety, depression, suicidality, and substance use, and our numbers are very high. And so our Director of Behavioral Health has been sort of coordinating some primary preventive services as well as secondary preventive services. It's a very important focus for school health.
Can you back up a sec? I thought I heard that Cuyahoga County was the highest in the nation? Is that...
So, the Youth Risk Behavior Survey data that identified Cleveland teens as being highest risk for depression was actually, in the nation, was actually from 2016.
Okay.
So, and I don't know where we rank in more recent data. It's pretty high, though.
But it's not suicide counts, it's...
No, that was responses on a behavioral assessment survey.
That's what I was hoping to hear, okay.
I mean, the nice thing about this is that it really does help target services, you know, you're not... This is a pretty precise list.
Right.
So, I mean...
And the... Your... Her name is Lisa Ramirez, has come out and met with the social worker team at the high school as part of the partnership also.
I would say that...
To coordinate care.
To me, this also could help us target Liz some professional development, that, you know, knowing this, I would love for our staff teaching everybody to get tools to identify and refer, based on this very clear picture of what the needs and concerns are.
Well, and if...
Interesting, too, and I'll just really quickly, that's one of the findings from my entry plan, the staff were saying that they were seeing these needs in students, and they, you know, are seeking more supports to help students as these come up, and identifying and knowing, you know, referrals is a piece of that.
Well, and as a teacher, you know, we love kids so much, and we get to know our kids so, so well, and, you know, they're why we come to work every day. But, I have no background in this, and it would be inappropriate for me to try to give kids advice that I... I mean, I try to give my own son advice, I try to give myself advice, and I'm a mess half the time, so... So it's really about having someone knowing exactly who to refer and when, and having those people available.
We do... We recommend some what's called youth mental health first aid training that will provide first-line adults with some, just some basic training on what you should be aware of and how to identify and connect for services, so that's what we recommend, and something that we've been doing in Cleveland. Maybe Julie, can you... Do you have...
Yes, actually, was it last year, there were several of us in the program that became youth mental health first aid instructors, so the program actually contains a number of us that can instruct and can go ahead and head up those courses. It's an eight-hour day or two four-hour segments that we like to do back-to-back, and our response has been really good. We did some of the teachers and some of their aides as well. It's pretty much an open forum at times as well, just to talk about maybe situations that they've been in, in addition to receiving the knowledge that they need to really look at a student as a first-ader, and say, you know what, I'm seeing some of these signs, let me go ahead and make that first attempt to speak to the student, to refer them to where they need to go. So it's a really great program, we would definitely highly recommend that for the teachers and the staff.
So when you make the referrals, I mean, if it's something that has an immediate need, you have to get the consent from the parent first, is that correct?
Right, as long as the child is under 18, as the student is under 18.
But are there, like, consents before the services, like, the parents might at the beginning of the school year? Okay, and then my other question is, now you said the Metro Health Services, is it two days a month?
The clinic is open two days a month. It doesn't currently include mental health services as part of the clinic, it's the assessment that Dr. Meyer discussed, and we'll get into some of the results on that in a little bit, but then, assessment and referral, both to our internal staff, the social workers who know them well...
Yeah.
And to outside providers.
Okay.
Yeah. If I could add, just to end this part of this, that our staff, our staff know this, our staff live this every day. Our staff were right on, in line with everything that everybody else said, and they're seeing not only the emotional impact of what's clearly a crisis for young people in our country, but the behavioral impact and the learning impact and all of those pieces, and I know that our team behind me, it does a really good job of bringing professional development to address those issues. So when I first came on board, I had attended a PD training on how to manage trauma behaviors in the classroom, because that was something that was interesting to me, but the room was so full, it was standing room only. I mean, our staff know this, and do want the resources, and would... And see the impact of it every day. So, it's important that Metro Health is here and that these assessments are part of what they're doing in the clinic. So I'll just move through this slide relatively quickly. There were some benefits, I anticipated, this was again during the planning stage for the clinics of last year. Folks assumed we would be improving overall health, providing access to healthcare, removing logistical barriers. That's one that we really saw as a great benefit to all of our families. So people that... Our population and the mix of population in terms of Medicaid and private insurance is new to Metro Health, I think you'll remember that from our first presentation, whereas in the CMSD district, I think it's about, over 90%, maybe 95% of the students are enrolled in Medicaid. We don't know the exact number for our district, but we believe it's around 55%, and then we believe around 30% are, have private insurance, and the rest are uninsured, but the Metro Health team will work with fam... But the Metro Health team um, will work with families who want to access health insurance. But the the barrier issue is an important one, because a lot of people, especially in northeast Ohio, my my belief is. Um, see school-based health as just something for people who don't have a relationship with a primary care physician. And that, that's just not the main goal. Of course, it's a wonderful resource for those students. But it's so much more than that. Um, and then um, again, increasing knowledge of their health, improved attendance. Um, because they won't have to leave school for a day to be seen by a physician in the building. Um, and then the concerns that were raised were about privacy. So wanting to make sure that it was um, that students could be seen by somebody. Possibly somebody other than Nurse Rose might make them, they might feel more comfortable sometimes talking about some things with a primary. That they would talk to a primary care physician about, but we, but also privacy, there were concerns about. Um, whether if we were co-located in the clinic, whether students who were coming to the the clinic. For an aspirin and then another student who was coming, because they wanted STD testing, sorry, not aspirin. Ibuprofen, right? I'm old, I still use that word. Um, so there were some concerns about about privacy. Um, there were some concerns from staff raised in the focus group, I believe, about whether there. And and possibly from from family members about whether there would be any misuse of the clinic. We haven't seen it. Um, uh, can, again, concern about load use, we haven't seen that either. And Dr. Meyer is going to talk about that a little bit more. Um, cost was raised. Remember, as part of both the focus group and a survey, we're not answering your questions when you raise a concern. But um, there isn't a cost to the family. I'll take this as another opportunity. There's no, um, Metro does not collect any copays. At all um, as part of the service. So if you did have a copay with your pediatrician in the community. To be seen at the clinic at the high school for the same thing, there would be no copay. Um, and to the district, there was that, that concern was raised, but the the, um, there's no cost to the district for the operation of the clinic. Other than the time for the partnership. And the frequency, wanting, some people wanted to know that we would have it more, but we're working on that.
I want it two days a week.
Two days a month.
I want it two days a week.
You want it two days a week. So then, when we get to it later, when we get to our our enrollment numbers later. You'll see why we can't have it two days a week right now, but we'd love to get it to two days a week in the future also. Um, so you can see this slide, the question was, um, would you use the clinic? Seventy-one percent of students said yes. Um, seventy-six percent of family members said they would allow their students to use the clinic. And a hundred percent of the staff said they would encourage their students to use the clinic. Um, telehealth services were were um, a little bit lower numbers for telehealth. And that's something that Metro will be, will be bringing to the clinic in the future, but but also positive numbers.
Which was kind of interesting to me, because most of our teens are particularly like the text your doctor telehealth. Like, that's their favorite thing ever, right? Because they don't actually, like, it's like, you know, they just text their concerns and then you address them telehealth. So I was, I was interested to see that actually your students aren't that, the small sample size.
Yeah. So again, these are, these are similar to an earlier slide. In terms of the five key issues that needed to be addressed.
Okay, so um, just a quick update on our enrollment and our visit volumes. So that's my mantra, every day in school health, enrollment, visit volumes, enrollment, visit volumes. Um, so we're pretty, pretty, um, we're pretty encouraged um, by the numbers. Um, so at this counting, there are about a hundred and ninety-five students enrolled, which is eleven eleven point five percent of the students. Who have access to services. Um, and we've been doing a pretty good job of seeing a significant number of students. Um, during every session. Um, so we're, we're pretty pleased with with the way. Um, that this clinic's been progressing in terms of um, in enrollment and visit volumes. Um, we, um, everybody asks, oh, well, do you just send the um, enrollment form with everybody, student? We say, yes, we send the enrollment form with every student. Um, it's, it's just, it's just a process to get those. Um, consents signed, so.
I'll just tell a a couple of very quick anecdotes. I know that you'll wanna, that you want us moving through this. But um, we mailed home the enrollment form with the first day of school packet with the principal's letter. We have shared it through social media. We have stacks of it in the nurse's office. We, it it's everywhere. Um, we're finding that the the best time for enrollment. Is um, the day before a sports season starts. That's the number one best time for enrollment. Um, we, so there have been two major pushes um, by Katie and myself, working very closely with Rose. And Debbie, and that is, um, and the principals actually, and the athletic director. So at the beginning of the year, for the first clinics, we said, who are those kids that are getting those exclusion letters? Because, and they're not going to be able to come back to school as of whatever the magic date was in October, because they didn't get their immunizations. They're getting the exclusion letters, let's focus on them, let's make additional calls, the principals. We, we worked very closely with the principal um, on that. And then it, we moved to those sports physicals, because we wanted students to be able to participate. And so we've spoken to the coaches, Katie and I've gone out and spoken to them. But still, they, and they, they really push it with their students and say, you can come in, you can get the physicals uh, um, after school. And Metro even came and did a special day, and I, I, I just couldn't say more positives about the the. The true depth of the partnership with with Metro Health. In that, when I said we needed, we needed help for our our winter physicals. They brought, I think, Julie, six staff that day? Did you have six staff for a spe-? Just came, not even on a clinic day, came and mainly saw wrestlers, right? Was it wrestlers that day? Some cheerleaders, yes. So we, we, they, they came out. We put them in the coach's office for that day, and we.
The trainers and the coaches.
The trainer's office and the coach's office, and we, we um, got it done, but they, they got it done. I'm not qualified to do that.
Hey Nancy, just a suggestion, and I don't know if you've thought of this, but um, maybe trying to enroll eighth graders towards the end of the year. So they're ready when they come into the high school and ninth grade.
Yeah, like with their, with their scheduling information.
Yeah, that's, that's a great idea, and that's the other positive piece about this is, once they fill it out.
It's good for all four years.
For the rest of their time in the district. So thank you for that.
Another idea would be the um, during conferences, you know, you sign up for conferences through the TISO, I think, TISO?
Yeah.
Did I make that up?
Yep, no, you're right.
And they're in ten minute increments, and you very often have a chunk of empty time, just because the teachers aren't all in this beautiful waterfall. Kind of a way. And so parents have extra time, and so if there was actually an opportunity to sign up, to literally register for a time slot.
Register for a slot, that's a good idea. We were, Katie and I were there for last.
Intentional.
Yeah, conference night, but we didn't do that. That's a good idea.
And it would be, oh, okay, I'm going to the health services now.
That's a great idea.
Are you guys alarmed with these numbers? I mean, from looking at other partnerships that you have?
No. No, it's a, it's a, this is a, it's just such a significant challenge. I mean, when you think about. Um, you know, we've been in CMSD district now since twenty thirteen, and we're just over the fifty percent hurdle. Um, but every year it's going to be a struggle, right? So, you know, if you think about, in in CMSD, unfortunately, about. One in three children who start in any one building at the beginning of the school year will not be in that same building. At the end of the school year, there's a lot of trans vacancy, and then also in a high school building, you're looking at twenty-five percent turnover anyways. So you're looking at having to re-enroll potentially your program, fifty percent of your program every year. So it's just an ongoing um, potential challenge every year. But it really, it takes getting, there is a tipping point, at which point you just become a fabric of the community. And it just is an additional piece of paper that people sign. But it takes a lot of, you know, that really partnership building, so that people understand. Um, what the program's all about and what it really means. Um, and what we actually do in a school health program, and to really build that kind of trust that community members need. Um, when they then finally consider it just a piece of the fabric of the community.
So Nancy, with the Weiss Institute, and I know we're still in exploratory mode with that. Now, there's a series of benchmarks that the students have to go through. Is one of those benchmarks making sure that you're enrolled? In a program like this?
Not enrollment, um, annual physical is, but not enrollment in a program like this. That's not one of the um, the indicators that Johns Hopkins has embedded in the say yes work. But annual physicals, which this could support, is.
Okay.
Um, so this is just more information, a little bit more detail on the numbers. Um, so you can see that we are um, seeing a significant number of nurse visits for immunizations. Um, so thank you, Julie. Getting it done in terms of immunizing uh, our tigers. Um, and we're seeing um, a significant number of those preventive visits. Um, so that's really promising um, to see. And and then we're also seeing a significant number of follow-up visits for those students. That were identifying a, an ongoing need um, during preventive visit usually. So um, these are, these are really pretty, pretty positive numbers.
And the, if I could just point out on this slide also, that this, this bottom um, two bullets. That um, forty-four screeners have been completed of the seventy-nine students who've been seen. And tho- and these numbers don't include those thirteen who are there on that special sports physical day. But um, forty-four screeners have been completed, and eighteen percent of those who were screened on those four. On suicidality, um, substance abuse, depression, and anxiety, were referred for um, additional services. Or conversations to both our in ha- internal staff, our social workers. And and externally. So those numbers are consistent with, I know what you're seeing elsewhere. It's, it's a small n, but it's consistent.
So on a clinic day, what's your capacity? It's gotta be, I would assume it's more than twelve or thirteen.
Yeah, it depends on um, the type of visit. So I can see, um, you know, twelve to eighteen children. Um, but um, we also have the capacity, oh, thank you, look at, multi, multi-talented. Um, so I, but Julie is also, has a capacity to see, you know, ten to twelve. It really, the, the exciting thing about school health is it's not your normal clinic. Um, so if we do have a child who comes in with an urgent need that requires that we spend additional time with that child. Um, we're really flexible about scheduling. Um, when I bring my residents with me to the school health program. You know, they look at the schedule and they think we're supposed to see like that child right at that time. That never happens. Because we really try to ensure that we're not pulling children out of important coursework. I mean, I think that we all recognize that particularly some of our high-risk kids. You know, if a teacher has finally made some significant strides with that child, we are not going to pull that child out of an important educational experience. Just to get them a money shot. We can do that at another time. So we're really flexible with our schedule. Um, and, you know, sometimes we're able to see a significant number of kids, and sometimes we have a child who needs us to spend an hour with them. Um, so part of school health is being really flexible about the numbers. We certainly have target numbers that we need to be focused on in terms of um, just our, our own personal metrics. But um, we also really need to be flexible. I don't know if you have more, Julie's my flow manager.
It's cool, so I can have, I think I usually do anywhere between fifteen and twenty appointments for the day. Um, but it's school, so they may be absent, or they may not have gone to that particular class when I call them into the clinic. Uh, they may have chosen to go elsewhere during that period. So it's, it's, it's an interesting, just some of the, some of the barriers that we often have when we're, when we're bringing students in. It's, it's a different type of clinic. They're not coming with their parents. Um, and like Dr. Meyer said, oftentimes my conversation to the teacher when I'm asking for a student to come in is, is this an okay time for they to, for them to come? Are they testing? Is this one of their core classes that they can't come right now to? Um, so we try and respect the fact that they are in school, and although it's beneficial, they're not taking the whole day off for appointments. We still need to be respectful and mindful that this, they are in school, and we want to limit the time that they are missing their school, so. Yeah, there's just those barriers.
I think that's a great segue to our next section, where Julie and Rose are going to talk about the, the. The real meat and potatoes of the partnership, and that is how, how these two women work together. And the difference in the roles between the school nurse and the school-based health center.
Um, and so although some of the goals may be similar, um, the way our roles are, there are very um, separate. Um, and complementary roles. Um, so typically the school nurses in the, you know, clinic in the, in the nurse's office. They're typically RNs with a variety of education um, and certifications. Um, we typically work with the educational staff, um, and our focus really is health promotion, education. Um, screenings, uh, managing um, chronic illnesses, healthcare plans, things of that nature. Um, in terms of our day-to-day, um, we're more, more like triaging is, is what I would. That's probably the term that people would mostly be familiar with. So when we see our sixty to eighty kids a day. It's, it's really triaging those students. Um, and it's, you know, a lot of times you're determining, you know, is this an asthma attack? Or is this a panic attack, or things of that nature. Um, so really, you know, in a hospital setting, the triage person. Is kind of prioritizing, and they're not doing the things that like the school-based health folks would do. They're not diagnosing, they're not. Um, you know, treating, it's ba- it's basically that you are um. Um, determining needs and determining gaps in care, you know, in terms of what we see every day. Um, and no two minutes are alike in the nurse's office, it's in a similar way. So that's, that's basically, it's coordination of care, and um, I'll talk a little bit later about the other piece, but. But that's the great thing, is that as Rose doing, is doing her job within her clinic setting, she's very familiar with the students. Um, they're comfortable with Rose, so she'll, you know, they'll come in and they'll discuss maybe what, you know, their symptoms or what their feeling is. And then, just like she said, she'll triage, and then we'll have a conversation, and we'll decide whether or not um, that's a great student to be seen. Or whether or not we need to maybe reach out to a parent to receive that consent. But essentially, for a school-based health center nurse, uh, we're there, we're in the school, we're in the school grounds at Cleveland Heights. At the Heights, we're actually within the clinic, at our other schools, we're within a mobile uh, unit. Um, and we just, we work cooperatively with the schools. I think that's most important, is we're there as a partnership with them, providing this healthcare. For the students. Um, and we just, the great thing is, we do have a multidisciplinary team. Or we can refer to those services that we don't actually have in the clinic or within the mobile unit. Uh, so it's, it's been fun, actually. Um, I've never done school health until about a couple of years ago. So when I came in and saw that even within this unit, we still had a multidisciplinary team, that was exciting to me. And it's such a great benefit to the students. Um, one of the most important things is, we want to reduce uh, health disparities. I mean, there's students who just, they don't have access to care for a variety of reasons. There are single parents who work. They're unable to bring their children to school during a school day. Um, and so we, what we were noticing, what I noticed when I look at the registry, is students that we'll see. Who haven't seen a physician, or haven't had any sort of preventative care in a couple of years, uh, or maybe more. And when you're a young person and haven't had preventative care for a long period of time, that's, that's a red flag to me. Because in that growing state where there's so much that can happen, we need to have eyes on them, we need to establish relationships with them.
need to have eyes on them. We need to establish relationships with them, which is another one of the wonderful things is as we're establishing relationships with these young people, especially at the Heights where they're in high school, then moving out into the real world, sort of speaking, we want them to develop good, healthy relationships with providers. We want them to understand the importance of preventative care and we don't want them to fear going to a provider and receiving the care that they need. So that's been exciting too. Your students are phenomenal. I think after every clinic, I'm like, these kids are so great. I have had so much pleasure in getting to know them. They have received us very well. They're extremely respectful, especially when they come back for the follow-ups. If they see me, they're not always that happy. They usually know it's a shot that day. But nevertheless, they're still, they've just been great. I tell Rose all the time when we do our post-huddles, I'm like, I just can't get over, these kids have been really, really great. They've got so much going for them. So you've definitely done well in educating and in being with your students. They're great kids. And then the other thing we do is just receiving that funding from third-party payers, including Medicaid and also the other payers that Dr. Meyer had spoken about previously. So how do we work together? How do we work together, Rose? We work well. We work well together.
I mean, I know, there's a number of bullet points up there, but I think in summary for me is I think there's been a shift, you know, in the nurse's office, just knowing that we have this resource and knowing that the student who comes in, you know, with an asthma attack, who doesn't have an inhaler, who we're trying to manage without an inhaler, I know that, okay, in a week or two weeks or whatever it is, I know I can connect this student hopefully with Metro. And there's not a day that goes by that, you know, Debbie and I aren't giving out the Metro enrollment forms. It is a daily thing, pretty much. If it wasn't for the enrollment forms, we would probably keep them busy two days a week like you would like to see. But that is, that's definitely a hurdle, a hurdle, I mean, not a huddle, a hurdle, a barrier. But it is what it is. So we do have to get the enrollment piece going. But so I think it has kind of shifted our approach a little bit and it's been wonderful knowing that we do have this resource for the students in our district who, for whatever reason, there's gaps in their care. Like Julie said, kids that, there were a couple of kids who hadn't seen anyone for several years. So, go ahead.
Yeah, if I can just touch on a couple of the bullet points that I feel is really such a great purpose for us being there is just the increasing disease management, especially for those students who are type one diabetics or who have asthma and teaching them about self-management of their disease as well. And then the other one that I wanted to touch on was reducing emergency room and medical office visits. What we see oftentimes is students who either don't have insurance or who have Medicaid or who don't have the transportation or other health disparities, when they need help, they go to emergency room to somebody who doesn't really know them, starting fresh. So this is an opportunity for us to establish care, establish the relationship, get to know their history, and continue with that continuity of care. So it's so important as Dr. Meyer begins to get to know these students and as we've seen several of them follow up, you can just see them get so much more comfortable in each of their visits as they come. And now, not only are they seeing us, but they're learning about their disease, they're learning how to self-manage. So that's been a really great part as well. Anything else, Rose? They talked about the student absences and things like that before.
Yeah, and I guess just back to this, I couldn't overstate how pleased I am with the level of partnership between the human beings sitting at this table, but also the institutions because it's, I hear each of them compliment each other all the time or get emails after a particularly tough clinic day saying, from Rose, saying, Nancy, they were here till six o'clock because they saw twenty-two kids today. Or from either of these ladies saying, Rose is just fabulous. The huddles at the beginning of the day and then the debriefing at the end of the day has been great. So I'm just really pleased to be part of it. So just very briefly, we are working on enrollment and engagement this spring. I have some student group appointments set up with four different student groups over the next two weeks that Katie and I or Katie or I will be going and talking to them to try to get the peer word of mouth a little bit instigated there. We will be meeting with the spring sports coaches and we are working on increasing the current workflow to get the visit volumes up, but we need that enrollment up. And then we will be working on, in April and May, on the student, staff, and family evaluations to plan hopefully for next year. So you asked a lot of questions during, but do you have other questions you'd like? I know we went longer than you had planned. Sorry.
That never happens.
I'm pleased to see that you're going to be visiting the classrooms in CTE and talking to the students for several reasons. One, it's great for the kids in clinical health careers to see real-life human beings who have a job that is, you know, that they aspire to, like possible career outcomes for what they're doing now in high school. And it also gives them a bit more street cred in the school as, because if students are seeing, are going to the clinic and seeing you and their peers are in clinical health, then there's this path, right? This is one of the things you could be doing with that class. And I think that's terrific. And, you know, all the students, no matter what they're studying, need to see adults who are using that learning in real-life situations later on.
Can you refresh me on the partnership term? So this is one semester into, how many semesters are we?
We're in the, so this, we've just begun the second semester of the actual clinic, but we began, we had the signed MOU last year to begin the planning process and the survey and focus group process. So it is still a pilot. And after the evaluation this spring, I imagine we'll be sitting down and talking about next fall and whether the enrollment and the visit volumes would allow us to, would allow Metro to be able to continue the investment that they've made in this partnership. And then we would assess our staff willingness and interest in, and family willingness and interest in continuing the partnership also and possibly expanding it. I mean, when we originally presented, we talked, the staff are interested and ask us about opening it up to the staff, for example. I know that there has been conversation about opening it up to family members of high school students. And then, and I see this as moving out from there. Eventually, we would love to see it as something that would be an opportunity for the community, but that's some time off.
So based on the numbers right now, do you think the partnership is in jeopardy? It's not the word I'm looking for, but you're sort of, it looks like we're on track to meet the current numbers that you sort of expected? I mean, I'm putting words in someone's mouth here and I don't mean to be, but...
Well, I think initially, the first month numbers for the enrollment were fabulous and Katie was super, super excited. And then we've definitely had a dip toward the late fall. But the visit volume, I think, is pretty good. And I know, just knowing what I hear when I talk to our other health partners, so the Cleveland Clinic at the elementary levels, their visit volumes are not, at the mobile units are not to an average of twelve. And they would like them to be. I can understand why. But we need to get more students enrolled so that we can do all, and the longer we're there, as you said, the more of an opportunity there is for us to increase those numbers. I don't see, I don't personally see it in jeopardy at this point.
So it seems to me that it's worth our investment. I mean, I think that's, I don't know if you're looking for our feed, what kind of feedback you're looking from us, but, you know, from my perspective, you know, this is all win-win for everybody, you know, especially our students. I mean, the more we can throw at them, you know, positive healthcare experiences is a positive thing that we can give back to our community.
Thank you for that. I think the administration and the staff at the high school have been great. And so, for example, we will be looking, Rose and I have already talked about this, starting to get those reports of the eleventh graders who don't have their immunization for 12th grade over the next couple of months so that we can target them for getting those consent forms returned so that we can get them in even this spring so that they don't end up on that exclusion list. That's another, another very specific way that it can benefit all of us because that does, when we have kids that have to miss school because they don't have, either haven't had the immunization or haven't turned in the proof that they've had the immunization, that's hurting everybody. So that, I think, will really help for the fall also.
Well, I know from, you know, we hear from a lot of community members and when we found out it was this team that was assigned to us with a physician that came here, there was a lot of buzz.
So you can't go away.
Very, very exciting for a lot of us. So it's like, so, yeah, thanks for everything you guys do.
Thank you so much. We appreciate that.
I'm very interested in the staff wanting access. And that's something that I think we're going to have to talk about in the future because that could be an absolute game-changer for a whole lot of different things.
Yeah, if that ups your numbers, then that's great. And if it allows more of our staff to be at school and reduce our absenteeism, then we've got, you know, the instructors in the building where everybody wants them to be, mostly them and their students, I don't see a downside to that.
Yeah, I mean, as a family doc, that would be fantastic. I mean, we're definitely, we're a family medicine-focused program for that specific reason that we can increase that type of access because we can see adults and children. So that was a purposeful decision and we've had a lot of discussion about that. So we would be very interested in looking into that, absolutely.
I'm also sort of interested in what you mentioned about the privacy issues. And, you know, as a guy who spends his day around, you know, high school and middle-school aged students, I completely understand that. You know, these are people who are sort of hyper-aware of everything about themselves all the time. And so if there's something sort of structural that might need to change, George is eager for another project.
Funny you should mention that. That is our biggest challenge, I will say. Julie will second me on this. I am a huge stickler for privacy. Obviously, it's essential to what we do in the school health program. We are talking about incredibly sensitive issues with children and we need to respect privacy the utmost. We have certain situations that even I, sometimes when people are coming and going, I'm not particularly comfortable with that because you can see who's coming and really should be fully private. And the current facility that we're in is, we're working with it, but it could certainly, we could be much more productive and see more children if we had a different space.
Actually, that's another one of the big reasons why we're probably hanging right around thirteen, fourteen students is because if Dr. Meyer has a student in our little cubicle that we've created for her, I can have a nurse student for myself for an immunization, but then that's it because we want to protect their privacy. So we don't want any more students in there. We don't want them sitting in the hallways. We've attempted that, but, you know, they're teenagers. They get tired of sitting out there. So then, who knows, talking to their friends, whatever. So that has also limited us in terms of numbers because I can have a student for myself, Dr. Meyer can have a student, but I'm not able to begin the process of like triaging that student, another student for her. So then one student can leave and she immediately, as we would like in a regular family practice clinic where we have them totally ready with vital signs and questions answered and the mental health screener completed and all that. Because we are trying to be careful with their privacy.
I'd really like to, you know, I'd love to come and see it.
We'd love to have you.
Absolutely.
Because I don't know, I feel like I understand, but I would just, I think I would benefit from coming to see the actual space.
Sure.
So maybe we can get in touch, maybe we can talk about when it's available and figuring all that out. And then also the other thing that I wanted to bring up is I think that there is great need to do what we can to open it up to community. And perhaps some summertime hours or some break hours, you know. I mean, the facility is there when there are not kids in the building, both when we're on break, weekends, all of that. It would seem that if we could find a way to make it available to the community at times when that wouldn't be taking anything away from our core business of teaching, why wouldn't we want to get more benefit out of the investment that the community has made in this wonderful facility? So I think whatever we can do to look there would be great. And I know I'm preaching to the choir on that.
Well, I think what I would say, and I'm only going to speak for Metro Health a tiny bit here, and you can tell me if I'm inappropriately speaking for you. They've made a significant investment in their Cleveland Heights facility and would love to see our family members access it for primary care and for specialized care and for lots of, you know, which is right down the street. I think our first order of expansion would be to our other, to the siblings of our high school students and to our, and to our staff if we could work that out after we get the enrollment up with our current high school students. I do think that, and I, as you know, I'm familiar with the fact that we did initially envision there being this community clinic at the high school. And while I still think that that's a good goal, I'm not sure that, how this partnership, and now Metro Health has a facility in the community, you know, we'll just have to talk and think about that a lot.
But, you know, I will, I will say we would be very open to that. I mean, particularly if you're thinking about doing a big facilities change to structure a clinic, I would highly recommend ensuring that if you're going to do that, you have an external door for community. If you're going to make that investment, you should consider that.
Absolutely.
Nancy, just a quick question, and you may not have the answer immediately, but how much of this do we promote to families who tour the school and are looking to, you know, when people come in and they're kind of deciding if this is where they want to go to high school, do we promote this as one of the things we offer? Because I think that's fantastic.
Yeah, I actually do not know the answer to that question.
Okay. You can get back to me later.
Joy Henderson question.
Right, might be.
Thank you for this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry for keeping you so long. Thank you. Next, I'm going to turn it over to our superintendent who's going to talk about her hundred-day Next, I'm gonna turn it over to our superintendent, who's gonna talk about her hundred-day entry plan findings.
All right, well, good evening.
Good evening.
Anything? Has it really been a hundred days?
Uh, it's been a little more than a hundred academic days.
Okay.
Maybe about a hundred fifteen academic days, um.
But who's counting?
But, yeah, who is counting? Um, I am, it seems like just yesterday, though, that I was here. We were having a board, our first board retreat, and we were talking about the goals for this year, and I was starting to, you know, just initially gather information. Um, so it's hard to believe that it actually has been, you know, around a hundred days from the start. Um, I am really excited to talk about all the things that I've learned about the district. I will start by saying that initially, uh, when the board selected me, you know, I thought, well, you know, we're twenty-four years in Chicago. At my last job, I was responsible for six hundred and forty-six schools. Six hundred and forty-six to ten schools, I'll be done by noon. That was not what my experience has been. And in fact, um, I have really learned a lot about the richness of the district, the complexity of the district. And the one word, when I'm, you know, in my one-on-ones or in my focus groups with people, when I talk about what I've learned about Cleveland Heights University Heights, the one word that captures the spirit of the schools and the community is engaged. There are high, high levels of just, even the presentation that we, that we just saw today, this evening, high levels of engagement, um, for any stakeholder, whatever the project, the focus, the passion is, for any stakeholder, they are highly, highly engaged, um, in that. And I think that's so important to the health and the success of a school district. And so we are really blessed to have that level of engagement across all the different entities in the district. So I'm gonna start just by sharing what my first couple of days were like in the district. Um, and so you'll see both my experience as someone new to the district, but also how fun the, the first day and first days of schools are.
Know this guy.
It's not touch screen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, it's not touch screen.
Nope.
Oh. Thank you.
That's awesome.
I'm very excited that she's here. Uh, the, the, the sky's the limit with our school district. We know that Miss Kirby's the right person for this job, and I'm so excited to see how things unfold.
It's gonna be a good year.
Bittersweet, but I know I gotta let her go, but, okay. I know she'll be great.
Hey, how are you? I cannot believe that, boo. This is literally eye-opening. What is part of the bus again is since, uh, what the experience of the students and also, um, you know, how all of the different systems work, um, in the system. So it was really fun to see the kids getting on, a little nervous. Their parents at the bus stops too, you know, like watching their kids, you know, probably just for the best. I was definitely lost on that.
Yeah, my son is excited. I'm excited as well, um, so I know how I feel when I was in middle school. Uh, to finally go to school the first day of middle school, from high elementary school, and here he is, you know, and I'm pretty excited about it, man.
It is excitement. We're so excited to get started. It's gonna be a fantastic year.
I wanna thank Adam Do for putting that together, um, for us, to help me chronicle uh, what those first days were like for me. And so now I'd like to move to, as soon as I get the presentation working. Am I hitting the wrong thing? I'm gonna get it.
Yeah, no, it's, it's just the, it's the video.
Oh, okay.
It's the video, it's not you.
Okay, there you go. That's okay. Okay, great. So, uh, tonight I'm gonna share the findings for my plan and talk about the strategic priorities that have emerged from the things that I've learned, um, from the district. So I'll talk about the goals. I will revisit the plan. I'll revisit the goals and the elements and the core values undergirding the plan. I'll share my findings and share, um, initial strategic priorities from those findings. So if you recall, way back in August, I drafted a, an entry plan and shared it with the board for feedback, got lots of great feedback, um, in terms of who I should be talking to, what types of questions I should be asking, um, who were the key stakeholders for me to engage with. Um, and so I came into that process with three specific goals. Uh, the first goal was to learn about the district, so the history of, of Cleveland Heights University Heights. What was, what were the day-to-day operations? How does the district function? Who are the central office departments? How are they organized? Who are, who are the key partners that we work with? Um, third focus in terms of learning about the district was understanding the data, not only the quantitative data, but also the qualitative data. I will say that learning and understanding the Ohio Department of Education has been really a monumentous task. Um, understanding all of the different measures that schools are held to and districts are held to has been, uh, pretty interesting and quite different from my experience in, in Illinois. But also, there's been, um, lots of great qualitative data that I've been able to, to experience, both in terms of classroom visits, visiting professional development, interviews, talking to students, focus groups as well. All that was really, really important. And it was interesting to see, um, how in many instances, there was a lot of mismatch between what the quantitative data showed and what qualitative data I was seeing in the classrooms as well. Um, and then the final thing that I really wanted to understand was the strategic plan and where we were in the implementation of that plan, what were the successes that we were having, and what are the areas that we wanted to double down on as we move forward. So the second goal was to process the information. So I am a, I think people started saying, I'm a data hound, I am a processor. I like to, I need to see ev- I know I drive Alison Bird bonkers. But I like to see everything, I like to touch everything, I like to write the numbers down. Um, and so I spent a lot of time reviewing the data, trying to connect the dots, looking at those dots aligned to our five strategic goal areas, and then using that to say, this is where we really need to go, to go next, um, as a district. So there are five things that I always held close to me as I engaged in this process. One was really looking at the information that I was receiving through the lens of student, what was, what was best for students. So is this initiative, uh, do the data that we're looking at, in what ways do they help ensure that students are learning and mastering and are developing and are really meeting the goals of our strategic plan in terms of their success? Um, a second core value was transparency. So I was very deliberate about sharing the questions that I was posing, both in one-on-one interviews, but also in focus groups, and sharing that back. So this process tonight actually is a part of that transparency. In addition to this presentation, I will be also sending out mass communication to teachers and staff so that they know what we shared here tonight, so they can hear how all the information that they graciously, graciously shared with me, um, has been synthesized. A third value is this work around equity, and you will hear this as a theme tonight. So in what ways, uh, is the information that I was gathering aligned to our equity policy and our equity work? Where are their connections? Where, where, where are their disconnections? Where are their opportunities? A fourth value was around collaboration. So I was really interested in how the district works together, how central office departments work together, how teachers work together, how buildings work together, because that's a really important component of a successful district. Are we collaborating, but are we collaborating well to specific successes? And then a final core value is really this notion of continuous improvement. We've had some successes. How can we build on the successes, both across the departments, but also as a district as a whole? So we, you know, this, no one, and you'll see this in, in these findings, every department, every school, all the focus groups, everyone really is focused on improvement. So there's no entity that is interested in sitting on lo- on their laurels and, um, and just holding to the status quo. So for the entry plan process, I looked at multiple documents, lots of data, as I described. I engaged in department briefings by the different department heads within central office. I held one-on-one meetings with board members, principals, parents, elected officials, uh, community partners, area superintendents, and I was able to connect with former Cleveland Heights University Heights superintendent a couple of times. I also held focus groups at all of the schools, um, and also started both for the teachers and the students and also am completing my focus groups for some of the classified staff. I have a couple more groups, um, that I'll be continuing to meet with even as, even after this presentation. We also kicked off the year, and you'll recall, with fall community engagement meetings. So we had meetings at coffee shops, we had meetings at, um, playgrounds, we had meetings at Whole Foods. So really were able to, um, to hear and learn very early on about how people felt about the district. So, you know, after really about the first, I would say, thirty days, there are a couple of things that, that started to bubble through the surface. And so I started to use these, um, also to inform my questioning. So one was this focus on climate. So I was starting to hear from board members, principals, teachers, parents, students, that school climate was really, really important. And we know, of course, that the research also shows that. Both school climate and school culture are key to student achievement. And those were areas also that principals were working on and, uh, board members' parents also thought were really high priorities. A third was this notion around curriculum. We know that if we're going to experience high student achievement, students have to be exposed to and master the grade-level standards. I was very excited when I was elect, was selected to come to, to Cleveland Heights University Heights, because already the district had in place the mechanism to, uh, teach a curri- a consistent curriculum across the schools and the grade levels. There were some clear instructional strategies, and there was an assessment system. Now, some people might think that that goes without saying, but actually it does not go without saying, because in my previous third-largest school district in the country, we didn't have that infrastructure in place. So though imperfect at this point, and you know, this is something that we always, that we always build on, the central office team here has done really great work in making sure that we have those three things in place and are, and are continue to work to improve those. A fourth theme was this notion of data. What data do we have available? Where are we right now? What kind of information are we sharing with teachers? What kind of information are we looking at internally? What kind of information are we making accessible to, to principals as well, to help them with their work? Then the final theme is around development. What professional learning are all members of the organization getting in the roles that they are in to push us forward, to meet our goals? It was very important for me, and I started to hear that people really appreciated strong professional learning. But I also know from my experience that it's important that a school district is a learning organization that is really committed to being development, deliberately developmental. Because if you have a district where people feel afraid to say, this is something that I'm learning, I want to work collaboratively to learn this, or I really, you know, I need help with this, if you have an environment where you don't have that principal, it's really difficult to move forward. So for me, it's really important that we pu- we create a space where everyone is developing and everyone is working together to improve as well. And we're really paying attention to the type of professional learning that we're providing to principals, staff, central office members, board members even. So, uh, what are the key findings? And so these key findings are organized by the different stakeholder groups that I engaged with. And that first group here for me would be the board. And so this, this sounds familiar to, to all of you, because we've been talking about this since the summer. One thing that was very clear, even from the interview process, and I remember going back to my family and saying, this board is really engaged. Like, this board is committed. I remember like the dinner that night, and it went to like eleven o'clock.
It was?
Um, but, but that's, and I think that this is something that I do want to raise, because it's really important. All board members, very strong commitment to the schools, strong commitment to the community, lots of allegiance, like really sincere, um, drive for, for Cleveland Heights University Heights. Board also has a great, greatly values the diversity of the schools, the diversity of the community. We heard that as a part of our recent presentation around school funding. And that's something that was clear even from my beginning engagement with the board. Um, the board also very committed to the equity work, um, to the point where one of my superintendent goals is around the equity policy and deep, deepening that implementation. But we are also often raising this notion of equity as we wrestle with challenging issues that come before the board. Um, board, the board is very, and I feel like I'm definitely preaching to the choir here, but I have to, these are my findings, right? Very committed to improving student achievement. So with the recognition that this is a really strange system of accountability in the students, in the state of Ohio. Outside of that, still wanting to make gains, both not only in those measures, but the things that we know are important to us and are important to our families as well. Um, the board, and it's so funny, because when I first started, I said, what's Ed Choice?
Oh, and now you're in it.
That was August, what's this, this August, Ed? I, I remember Googling, what's Ed Choice? So lots of concern around Ed Choice and funding and the funding formula in Ohio. And again, lots of advocacy, really the lead district in Ohio, around the Ed Choice work. And I really credit our work, um, at the Capitol Conference in November with really launching a lot of the work that we're seeing now with districts across the country. Um, two other things, uh, we're very focused on fiscal management, you know, so the fact that every meeting, there's a five-year forecast that's presented is something that is really unique and really speaks to the principles that guide us. And then finally, um, the board definitely has a desire for more data, more information about the strategic plan and how, how we're doing, so we have similar principles around, um, the data work as well. So, uh, central office, and I, and I do want to pause and say, I, we continue to remain amazed at the dedication of the central office team behind me, who is often here till nine and, nine and ten o'clock, um, regularly works twelve-hour days. Um, and I'll say that each, each office, the first question I ask is, what are you focused on, right? What is, what's on your plate and what are you focused on? Every office is focused on improving student achievement, without question. Both operational and also the academic, the academic offices as well. Uh, the central office, my sin- my findings around central office also, um, offices noted that we're starting to see some gains in this year, it's a year, and even last year, to a certain extent, a year where we're starting to get some traction in the initiatives that the different offices, offices and central office, um, have led. And that's something that I also heard from teachers as well, so it was nice to see that alignment. Um, a true commitment to supporting staff in their work. So there is a recognition from the central office department, which is pretty slim, by the way, our central office, um, but really want to, to work with teachers around the challenges that they're having in their buildings, with principals around the challenges that they're having in their buildings too as well. So there's this desire to work side-by-side and arm-in-arm, um, with, with, uh, teachers and staff on the ground who are with students every day. Um, the central office offices also noted the, the need to deepen the work around equity. A lot of the equity training has been focused with teachers and folks in the building, and we also saw a need to make sure that that was a part of the experience and the professional learning of central office staff. There is also, um, you know, a call for stability. So one of the, the, some, a lot of the advice was, please don't come in and change everything. You know, there's a, there was a reference to like folks feeling like some of the things in the past have been a bit whiplash, right? And when I say in the past, we have people, you know, very rarely have I met anyone in the organization who hasn't been in Cleveland Heights University Heights for at least ten years. So people really did have a lot of historical knowledge and a lot of experience with different initiatives. So the stability was really, really important, I've heard from central office. And finally, um, a true commitment to the schools and the district. And finally, a true commitment to the schools and the district mission from central office staff. And you all see that in your engagement with them. You've seen different members of the team come up and present their work. So you have that evidence too. From the school administrators, so this would be the principals and the assistant principals. Again, number one focus, improving student achievement. Really, really focused on that, very aware of that, very aware of where their schools needed to go in order to improve. Principals noted that they really valued the work around curriculum, instruction, and assessment. And they saw, they were seeing the evolution of that work as well and were appreciative of that. Principals noted that the resources and the supports that students receive are critical. They felt that they were really great and needed for students. So when I say resources, that's social emotional support, that's opportunities in the arts, that's opportunities in sports, that's opportunities in leadership, and opportunities like the metro health partnerships. So all those things are really key and crucial for school administrators. They found those to be very valuable. Principals also noted that they wanted to do more collaboration among themselves. And I was very pleased that Mrs. School, to her leadership of all the principals this year, because we did change that structure such that they report to her, has made that a principal of the monthly principal meetings where principals are collaborating. They're visiting each other's schools now. And that's really important for principals as they develop their leadership lens, to have that space, that professional learning space where they're really collaborating around school problems and school leadership, school leadership challenges together, observing each other. Principals also noted, and assistant principals, that they're ready for the next steps with the equity work. So they noted that there had been some work and now are really interested in getting help and translating that policy to actual practice to help them. And then the final area was the need for focus in the different school models. So this is a district that has a grade AP program, the middle schools have IB, schools have Avid as well, and then you have the STEM elementary schools, right? So we have all of these different models. Sometimes that integration can be challenging for principals. And so really working on showing how all those programs really work symbiotically and align is something that principals would find great value in. So that there's growing clarity, but we need to continue that messaging and be clear, be clearer about that. It can be difficult being an IB school and an Avid school, or maybe it can appear to be difficult in being an IB and an Avid school. But we know that both of those, those models are now trying to figure out ways to work together because nationally, that's something that's happening. So, key findings for teachers. Again, I would say very committed to improving student achievement and teachers felt a lot of pressure. They feel a lot of pressure around the student achievement measures. They feel great levels of frustration around the work that they're doing in their classrooms and how that's translating into how, you know, their, how schools are rated. But still really committed to it, really trying to problem solve. Really, you know, lots of commitment to collaboration and supporting students. Another thing I heard, teachers really want voice in the decision-making. That was probably the number one theme that came out of all of the teacher focus groups. Really wanting to, as big initiatives are rolled out or considered, there's an opportunity and space for, for teachers to feel, and not in a ceremonious way, but for teachers to really be a part of that, of that work. Teachers noted that they needed more training on the district equity policy. Especially, I would say, we need to deepen the work in the high school. That was one area where the equity policy, and I knew that even going in, had not had as much permeation as in other, other places. To the point of the previous presentation, this desire to support the social emotional needs of students also came. That was a very big theme. So teachers were starting to see, you know, that kids were having more needs. They want, want tools to help them, help students. And so there was reference to the trauma, the trauma training that some of the teachers attended. And they also noted, "It was a great training. People couldn't get in. It was packed. We need more of that." There's a concern around the pacing and assessments. So, you know, the standards, the grade level standards, and kind of keeping pace with that while staying true to, you know, authentic education was a tension, you know, that teachers were wrestling with. I don't think that's a unique tension for teachers. I wrestle with that as a teacher myself. But that is something that, that teachers noted was a challenge, especially as relates to the assessments. I'll, I'll pause and say, I can tell that teachers are really now starting to really use the assessments and use the pacing guide because there is a lot of feedback around that. So that shows that people are using them. And it's good because that's how things get better, when the practitioners are really engaged in the work and they're having this conversation back with the curriculum team to make those adjustments. And so we have seen like, and we've seen that, that conversation happening. And teachers have noted also that that has been happening. They're seeing some of those changes. The work we're doing around valuing teachers and acknowledging teachers is really important. We, we must continue that. That is something that continues to be really important to teachers and they really are appreciative of that. And they also noticed that the work on culture and climate was really important as well. That's something to continue to work on. So there are some things that we have started to implement in our both middle schools and high schools as relates to culture and climate. So, classified staff, again, lots of commitment to the district, lots of years. What was really striking was the number of years people have been connected to the district. Saw that in the teachings, in the principals, central office staff, teaching staff, and the classified staff. They noted that the reductions have been challenging. So like this notion of doing more with less, they're feeling it. And so, you know, fiscal, you know, fiscal stewardship and being conservative does come at, come at a price. And so they, they noted that there have been challenges around that. They like, teachers would like more voice in decision-making. They would, you know, would, would like, you know, it's anything from, you know, "This is a job I do every day. I use this machine every day. I really know a lot about this work." And I want to make sure that I have some space where I can kind of share my experience, you know, as well, especially as we consider new initiatives. For the classified staff, the equity work was really, it kind of depended on who you were talking to. So, for example, some of the administrative assistants are actually on the equity committee, right? So they're like deeply entrenched in the work. Others really have very little awareness of that work. So there's a need to really, again, deepen and expand the equity work. A request for more targeted and tailored professional development. So we've done a lot of work and changed the professional learning for teachers. But from the classified staff, they also wanted more specific tailored professional learning for their roles. And then a final thing, there is very high interest in classified staff coaching and sponsoring extracurricular activities. And so that's something that we'll have to look at in terms of some of the labor law to see if that's an opportunity or not. Because I know that there are some reasons kind of behind the way things are currently structured that we should probably revisit. In terms of parents and community, high levels of commitment to the school and the district. So my parent meetings were focus groups. They were one-on-one meetings. Some of them were things that kind of happened also. And so we get some community feedback that way as well. But again, that same level of engagement. Parents are asking for more communication around school and student progress. So we have, you know, we have infinite campus, we have different newsletters that come out from schools. But parents really want to know very clearly how their kids are progressing and how, you know, and how they can support the students based on that. Very early on, and I continue to hear from the high school, parents wanting more support on the college advising and college application process. I know that there are some things that the counseling department has started this year. And I think now is a really nice opportunity to like really go big in this work because this is something where we can be, to be a leader, a leader in this work, I believe, in the state. Connected to the college and application process is also this commitment to a strong CTE model. So our, our compact with the other districts is really based upon some compacts that we've seen, the sixth district compact, for example. And we really aspire to have a really strong, robust, coherent, responsive CTE program. We're still early in the stages of that, but there is lots of commitment, lots of work happening around that and lots of attention focused on that from, from my team and I. And then finally, parents also really want more work around the equity work. We know for sure with the middle schools that this definitely was raised as an issue. And so that kind of has driven the work for the middle schools at this point. But there's also a need to expand that to all the schools around, around equity.
Hey Liz, before you move off this, this last slide, when there was discussion around college advising and the college application process and then the career technical education, was there also a desire for not just college, but career counseling or career, you know, because I, I don't think they're mutually exclusive?
Right. And one of the, the recommendations actually combines both of those things together as we look at how do we make sure that students, no matter what path they choose, have really strong supports along that path, such that when they graduate, they have a clear post-secondary plan to guide their next steps after high school.
Great, okay. Thank you.
And then my last, last group in terms of key findings to report on are the students. Now I have had conversations with students aged five to eighteen. And I will tell you that, and so I also learned, like if you do a fabless group with kindergartners, you need, the teacher has to stay in the room. That's the first thing. I remember teachers, "Oh, no, I got it." And then like fifteen minutes, "Could you come back?" You know. Because, you know, it's exciting. It's exciting when you're five. But I will say that in spite of the, the age of the child, the, the key theme I heard from students is they really love and learn best when they're actively engaged, when they're leading their learning, when they're reporting out, you know, when they are, when they are the teachers of the learning as well. So everything from, you know, the kindergartners were talking about whatever they did in spiders at Rockswell Elementary School, it had a big impact. They talked a lot about the spiders, a lot about the spiders. You know, anything from that to, you know, in high school, you know, really engaging lab experience or really engaging humanities unit that they're, that they're doing as ninth graders. So, so that was, it was really interesting to hear that. And kids were very, very, they were able to articulate that in a lot of different ways with the same thing. Students really enjoy all the different activities and opportunities that they have. They, I would say, and actually, you know, to this third point, and this is something that really came out, that is coming out with the student cadre. This, so much stuff happening in the high schools. Sometimes the kids don't know what's happening in the high school. So we've been talking about what are some ways that we can share the information better? And the last suggestion was a high school Instagram because that's how kids communicate. I thought it was Twitter. They told me it's not Twitter. So we could follow you on Twitter, but no one's really looking at Twitter. Kids are good Instagram. And so, you know, that's, that's something, that'll be a project that I'm going to have the cadre work on this year. So we can share the clinic is doing immunizations, you know, like that kind of stuff. And so that, so that was, yeah, that was interesting to hear that from them. Students really appreciate their teachers, really appreciate the commitment, are aware of that. Feel like they get a lot of help and support from their teachers. And then finally, they really like to listen and give, to be listened to and to give feedback. I was really encouraged even after some of my meetings at some of the elementary schools. You know, both Anjali Rosedale and Judge Petcak went to those schools and met with the student councils of those schools. And they had, in one instance, like a whole presentation prepared about sustainability, some sustainability work around styrofoam.
Styrofoam recycling.
Yes, recycling, yes. They had a, but like very, like very clear, and third graders, you know what I mean? So, so it's really, but those types of channels are really important for them. So I'm trying to think about how do we do that outside of the superintendent cadre in the middle schools and in the elementary schools? A lot of the elementary schools have student councils, so that's one, one space to consider too as well. So, so those are my findings across those areas. I can go to my strategic priorities unless there are questions about the findings.
The findings are the findings, right?
Yeah, pretty complete.
My only question is, did you have any interesting findings from your conversations with previous superintendents? You don't have a slide on that, so.
Yeah, though, the, the previous superintendent, well, you know, was, I, what I got was big history, right? So for example, when I met with Deb Delisle, she took me all the way back to small schools.
Okay.
And, you know, what that work was, how it came about, the challenges of that, what worked well with that. So that was really, you know, that was really interesting. I also learned from both of the superintendents, like the different strategies that they used to work with the different stakeholders. They had, you know, different approaches as well. And both really noted, you know, the, you know, a couple of things. One, Deb talked about how important, when she became state superintendent, one of her big aha moments was, "It's really important to advocate down at the state," right? And so she would see districts coming down to advocate and she, one thing she said was, oh, I, she was never really aware, you know, of that, doing that type of work. And that, this is like pre-Ed choice. So, you know, I'm sure there are things to advocate on, but it wasn't like the big, you know, monster that we have right now. And then Talisa talked about a lot of the work around equity, how that came about, and the different challenges that she had with that in terms of that rollout, but also kind of the passion for that work, the work around AP and AP access, the equal opportunity schools initiative, how she instituted that work. And so it was, it was really, both noted how much they learned as superintendents, Cleveland Heights University High School District, and how, you know, a lot of the lessons that they learned here really, now I'm not leaving, I'm not saying that, but it prepared them, you know, for, you know, for the, for the roles that they had, they had now. But it was really, and just, you know, I just really found like those conversations to be really helpful for me as I, as I'm processing information. One thing I said to the teachers is, you know, initially I was going to talk to them first, like really early, like September. But then, you know, kind of given my schedule and the, and the different things that, that I was trying to get, get done, I really didn't have the time to get to the teacher focus groups until, you know, November. But I had so much more context when I talked to them that I'm glad I waited because I could really understand some of the things that they, some of the things that they were, you know, were talking about too.
Sure.
So I want to give you a key finding.
Okay.
So, and it's all about the teachers. And you know my morning routine. I don't need to go into it with everything. But I, you know, sit in a bakery in the morning in a window and I work. It's a very productive time and a lot of community members just pop in and will, will talk to me. It's amazing how many teachers came up to me. I mean, teachers that I see coming in and out, they, I mean, they'll, you know, some of them try to ignore me, some of them wave and are very, very friendly. But, you know, some that had really not said a word to me. "I just met our new superintendent." And it was just me and a couple of other teachers sitting around, you know, talking to her. And I just felt so empowered just being able to share my thoughts. And it was just really, it was a really powerful moment. I mean, when you sort of go through in business where you've got all these layers of management and, you know, you're the CEO, which you are here, you don't get the, you don't get an honest, you don't get honest feedback sometimes. It's cleaned. And this is a way that, I mean, these teachers really, really felt appreciated. And I don't know if there's a way of bottling that or doing more of that. It's really valuable.
Yeah. And I, I speak to a little bit of my strategic priorities. I, I will say that I learned a lot from the teacher focus groups. And, and people were very honest. I think tentative at first, which I can understand. But it helped me, you know, all, all of the meetings weren't long, they're an hour. So some went two and a half hours. But, but it, it helped me to understand what really was working well, but also what the, where the tensions were, you know, also too. And, and the issues aren't easy and the solves aren't like overnight solves. But it, it's important for us that people feel comfortable really sharing their experiences, but also being a part, you know, of the strategic plan and solving our challenges collectively together. So, yeah, so it, it was a good experience. And I do have some thoughts on how we continue to do, to do that work. So one thing that I said to Dr. Dixon is, "I don't know what you did with this five-year plan, but everybody knows that, like they have it memorized." Like the goals are like very clear and all of the work is attached to it. And that is really, really powerful because that is not, a lot of times when people talk about goals and strategic plan, it's kind of like jargony and people don't really remember and they don't really know. And it kind of just, you develop and it's pretty, but no one ever comes back to it. But here in the district, people are very committed to these goals. And so as we move forward to 2025, I mean, ultimately, this will be up to the strategic, you know, the, the planning committee that's launching next week. But I see no reason to change goals, rather, you know, adjust strategies based on the needs of the district. But I think this is a really strong brand that people understand. And also, these are five pillars that really make sense for moving a school, a district forward and achieving the goals of, of our strategic plan. So I'm going to give the So, I'm gonna give the feedback in terms of strategic priorities against the goal areas, because that's, that's how we, you know, that's our norm. That's a CHUH norm, is to give feedback against the five goal areas, and I also think it helps us organize the work too as well. So, we know goal one is around student outcomes, expectations, and mastery. Are we hitting our goal of every student being college and career ready? So, some of the current, so, goal one, current strategic priorities, based on what I've heard. One is to engage in a curriculum and assessment audit this spring. We do have proposals then from about five different companies, and so, I'm gonna work with the Ed Services Department to determine which of those companies you want to do the audit of our curriculum, just to make sure that our pacing guides are strong, and if there are any other adjustments that we need to make in the assessments. We already have been making these assessment adjustments as we go along, but it's always good to have a critical eye to assist us with that. So, we have anywhere from partners from the state who have submitted proposals to some national partners, so we'll be looking to see who will be best. Second, we really want to study the implementation of the K-12 curriculum. I did hear a lot of feedback on different models of curriculum that really work well, that teachers felt were strong, and curriculum models that teachers had concerns about, especially around the primary curriculum, which is some of the, that's some of the feedback that the board, we've been discussing also. And so, you know, I've started to, we have had some follow-up meetings with teachers specifically based on some of the curriculum, curriculum successes, but also curriculum challenges that we've had. We are in an adoption cycle, so for most of our curriculum, we have two years until we move to another, another curriculum. But teachers and central office staff have made some adjustments based on the needs of students and have made some, made some adjustments on the assessments too tied to the curriculum. The third is, this continue to refine professional learning, to look at our professional learning plan over the course of the year and over the course of the summer, responsive to the things that teachers, for example, trauma-informed care have said that they need, but also principals and staff, you know, enroll staff development that people have said that they need. Fourth area is this district leadership team process. So, you know, Ohio has this Ohio Improvement Process, and the DLT is kind of the, the DLT process is the bedrock of that. Our DLT right now is in the process of revisiting that structure to make it something that is not only data-driven, but becomes a site where principals and their teams can collaborate together to solve some common challenges that we see in the assessment data, that we, you know, see in the data of the assessments that we give kids over the course of the year. So, for example, we'll be getting winter MAP results early February, and so, the DLT process, we're gonna be looking at how we can adjust that to make those sessions less about filling out the chart and more about, you know, what the work is. And I know the group has started to make those adjustments, but we're gonna, wanna work with that. One commitment that I've made to Mrs. Gould is that we're gonna lead the DLT together. And so, I'm excited about that. I'm a little nervous just in terms of, you know, the, the time that I would want to devote to it, but because it's gonna be done together, I know it'll be a wonderful, robust process. And then finally, a data dashboard to, to track our metrics. We do have a really good system at Infinite Campus. We have a lot of different measures. And we're looking at, we did have a Forecast Five analytics came out last week and met with members of the, of the cabinet. They were at the Columbus Group. So, we looked at their benchmarking software, which is really fascinating and interesting, but also the different dashboards that they have. So, now, we're gonna come back together to see if that's a tool that we want to use to meet our data needs. But I think, we know we have to be really clear on what we want, we want, what we will want that system to do as it relates to. You know, we have illuminated, we also have Infinite Campus, and so, is that our solution? But it was, you know, some really interesting work. The benchmarking is, is quite interesting, but more, I'll share more of that with the board as we make that decision. Second goal area is around equity empowerment and opportunities, so ensuring that all kids in our district get the highest quality education. And so, you've heard the thing around equity, it's probably no surprise that we want to double down on that work, but also support the social emotional, social emotional needs of students by supporting teachers and staff in this work. This is also the area, to your earlier question, where we'll launch the College and Career Task Force. So, that's going to be a launch this spring. And it, it actually dovetails nicely with the Weiss Institute work and the post-secondary planning system, because that work is coming to its end in terms of that research. And so, now, we'll have that information. We can now transfer to the College and Career Task Force to start strategic actions in order to really move college enrollment, college persistence, career, career enrollment, career success. In terms of the equity analysis, we continue to work on the middle school equity analysis work as well, so that will continue this spring, and I anticipate in the strategic plan. And then finally, you know, in the earlier presentation, they talked about the Euler School model. I know we had members of the board who went there last year to look at that model. We met early in the year, Nancy, Scott, and I met with the union leadership here, statewide union leadership, around launching a community schools pilot. We are both equally committed to that work. And so, that's something, but community schools does not mean charter schools, so let me just be clear. So, that's the wraparound, wraparound supports model. So, in at least one school for next year, we're gonna be committed to launching that model to see what does it look like when we really devote those resources embedded, embedded in one school. And so, really excited to be, you know, partnering in this work. The union really has been pushing this consistently. And we really commit that, we really commend that commitment on their part. This third area is around parent-community engagement. And so, we will be developing a district-wide communication plan that speaks not only to how we do internal communication, but also external communication, so what are the norms and expectations around that? So, we can be clear on how we can really grow, build upon the, the great communications work we're doing here in the district. We'll talk at the next board meeting about the National Network of Partnership Schools model that will be implemented this year at Noble, at Noble. We're one of Noble and Monticello, so we're one of two districts this year in the state of Ohio that's gonna get this partnership to deepen, to implement a family and community engagement, research-based model that comes out of Johns Hopkins. Those schools have already been doing really, really good work, and so, will be like the pilot, two pilot schools for this state as they seek to build this model out across, across the state. And credit really to the great family community engagement work that the district has already been doing. There's a lot of enthusiasm and knowledge of the work that Cleveland Heights University Heights has been doing, which is why we were selected as one of those pilot sites, but we'll speak more to that at the next board meeting. To this point, providing teachers and staff with more decision-making. This spring, I will be launching a teacher advisory task force and a staff advisory task force so that we can have opportunities for teachers to provide structured feedback on upcoming initiatives. So, this is outside of, we'll have teachers on the strategic planning committee. We have teachers that are involved in the different task forces. But we also want a structure such that, you know, and this is something, you know, and the union, Ari Klein and I have been talking about this. We're gonna work collectively together on what this will look like. But we really want teachers to, I mean, it's not just giving feedback, it's also doing some action research. So, we know that teachers are the closest to the work. We're trying to figure out, for example, how to get a hundred percent of our third graders at grade level before they graduate and go to fourth grade. We gotta talk to the teachers, right? Now, there, there's a million programs that will come and tell you how to do it, and what you should do, and how, but we have to, like, that has to be teacher work, right? And so, like, so that's one thing. It responds to those sessions that, that we will be launching, because really, and credit to the teachers, you know, I went to one session, they had all this research that they were sharing with me about the, you know, curriculum, I mean, the work that was happening. And, and again, like such passion for the work and passion for their students too. So, we, I just, I know that we, we want to make sure that we're maximizing the talent and the knowledge of our, of our teachers. And sometimes we get so busy, you know, like, sometimes we can miss that. We're relaunching KinderNet, so that's already happening in terms of expanding the knowledge of the community about the opportunities that we have. Our advocacy task force is launching this week, so we can continue, you know, long-term, really having a plan. Outside of, we know that there's decisions being made about ed choice soon, but beyond that, we have to have our own arm that's really working on this work for the district. And then finally, including measurements that matter in the 2025 strategic plan. So, that's one area that the committee will be tasked to explore as a part of that process as well. Goal four, goal four is about our value professionals, how we have a, how we have and maintain a culture of excellence in the district. We've already done some adjustments to the onboarding process, even this year, we want to build on that and really making sure that when people come enroll, even if they have experience in the role, that we have some professional learning to help them, to help them transition into, transition into that role. One of the big issues we heard all across the district was this challenge around vacancies in the substitute teaching pool. It's been a big challenge for us, big challenge for districts, big challenge for our substitute partner as well. So, we are looking in this budget cycle of ways that we may want to reorient our office such that we have more, we kind of run the substitute process versus just relying on our outside partner. We also have a, a job fair coming up in April, both for staff, but also for teachers. First-ever job fair, you know, which is exciting. And so, we'll also be able to get substitutes there. But we also been looking at our professional development models and how we can think about our, our schedule creatively such that when teachers are out for professional learning, because they do need professional learning, um, how can we maximize what teachers are doing in the schools when the teachers are out? You're also aware that we received a grant from the state of Ohio to partner with Cleveland State around increasing the diversity in our teaching pool. We have a goal of twenty percent to, to increase, increase it to twenty percent, so that grant will assist us with that. And again, the work around staff engagement is very important to staff, so we want to really make sure that we don't lose focus on that and make that a value that we still hold up. And the final area is around goal five. Now, I will say, when I talked to Dr. Dixon, she definitely talked about how much of her time was spent on, you know, the new high school and the new middle school. So, that was a lot of work. That facilities work was a lot of work. And, you know, we're in a period now where that is not the focus. This year, we have other things we're focused on. One being strategic budgeting, so we know we have a fiscal challenge ahead of us. So, really continue to be very conservative, continuing to look at the reductions that we're gonna, that we'll, that we will need to make, even outside of the levy reductions that we always make as a part of fiscal stewardship. We have engaged the lay facilities committee, so, you know, individuals who were on the previous Building Accountability Commission and some new members as well, to continue to give feedback on the use of our resources with our buildings. And then this notion of time, this, you know, I heard a lot of frustration around time, teachers not having enough time, even principals not having enough time. We don't feel like we have enough time, you know, with staff. And so, one of the things that we'll be doing this year is to look at the use of time and to really audit how the, how teachers are using time in their buildings, how we're using time as a district as well. And so, this is, uh, this is something that I, I became particularly fascinated in by looking at some, some models just recently, but also reflecting on this, this push for time that everyone's talking about. And then finally, the 2025 strategic planning process is launching next week. The steering committee is gonna have its first meeting on Wednes, on Wednesday. And because we've heard this, this concept of equity across all of the different goals, one thing that I anticipate seeing in that strategic plan is an equity goal, I mean, equity strategies across the goals. Because in every area, equity somehow was raised. By equity, I mean really the focus in the policy on closing the achievement gap for students in, in our district. One thing we have to do is get clear on the policy and be, and in our training, be very explicit how our training is going to help us meet that goal in particular. And so, it's, it's exciting that we're, that we're the first district in Cuyahoga County to have an equity policy that we really want to make sure, you know, we're living it, I mean, revising that, and making that a part of our norms, a part of what we stand for in the district. So, what's next? The listening continues. Just my entry plan presentation does not end the entry plan. You know, some, some superintendents have advised, "Oh, you, you're gonna be entry planning for quite a while." So, again, we're launching the strategic plan refresh next week. I still have some focus groups and some 101s. There's quite a few community stakeholders that I need to engage. I do want to have, for example, a breakfast with faith leaders in the community to talk to them about the work that we're doing, you know, share a bit about myself as well. Advocacy task force last, launches this week. And again, as I said, we'll be sharing these findings out with, with the full community of the district. And to that end, we have some events coming up, Heights Family Academy on February 29th, and also our State of Our Schools on the 4th of March. We'll, we'll learn more about the progress that we've made, we've made thus far in our next steps. So, before I go to my ending ending, are there any additional questions? I know that we've been talking, a lot of the stuff you guys have, we've been talking about quite a bit in board meetings and our, in our own 101s too as well, but as you kind of see the whole picture.
I think it's an incredibly impressive endeavor that you've been embarked on, very intentional and very comprehensive, and I, I just respect the heck out of it.
Thank you.
Were there any surprises?
The biggest surprise was ed choice, honestly. Like, once I understood how the funding worked and how, like, that was really, it was so very different than any experience that I've had in education. And I, I remember, you know, this, I'll go back, our, one of our first meetings, I said, "Okay, so my goal is to get, you know, schools out of ed choice in a year." And I remember Dan laughing, right? Because I didn't realize that, like, once you're in, you're kind of in for quite a while. Just have this whole, like, drop-off thing with val, like, you know, it's just.
Years have to drop off, yeah.
Yeah, so, that was, and then my, so that was the surprise. My big surprise is when Sharon Rohr, our EMIS coordinator, said to me, "These are the decisions ever made about ed choice based on a graduation from the thirteen, fourteen school year, and this is the amount of money now that we're gonna look," that was a surprise. That was, I never would have anticipated that being a challenge. And it, you know, so it, you know, helps me understand, like, the, the space within which we operate. So, but, you know, but so, yeah, those, it's just the context of the state that's been surprising. I knew that this was gonna be a really excited and diverse community, and it, and it definitely has, has shown that. I am surprised that you all ever sleep, because I do promise you, board members, that, you know, you really are deeply engaged and at everything, and connected, and passionate, and care. And so, I thank you for your, thank you for your commitment too as well. I wouldn't have learned half the things that I know now without, you know, our many hours and hours of conversation, um, the things that you all have shared about your experiences as parents, as board members, as alum, as PTA presidents, as leaders. So, it's been, it's been great.
So, one of my concerns is when you agreed to come here, you left the district of, I mean, you were running six hundred and some buildings, and now you got ten. The work is equally as important, and I think we all realize that. So, nobody looked at this as sort of a, I'd look at it as more like a lateral step. I mean, so, at some point in time, you know, probably not now, because this would be putting you on the spot, I'd just like you to revisit that decision. I mean, are you happy? Are you unhappy? I mean, I mean, how's this, how's this fitting in to your, to your life?
Oh, this, well, this, this is definitely busy in a different way than I was busy in, in a big district. So, in a big district, there's multiple layers. There's probably like eight people between you and the schools. But I, what I, what I feel to be true is still the same. The experiences that I've had as a teacher, really as a student, as a teacher, as an administrator, as an administrative administrators, et cetera, have really prepared me, I think, you know, for this role. So, a lot of the things that, it's been great to, you know, we're avid district. I was an avid teacher, right? So, I really understand it. IB was huge in Chicago. The AP equity work, you know, we had fifteen schools involved in that. I was there for the initial launch. Like, I get all of that, you know, all of that work. The challenges around, again, curriculum instruction and assessment, we were really wrestling with. It's actually a lot harder in a big district, because you never really get to the teachers, right? So, you never can really. So, you never could really have those conversations. So, yeah, I, I feel like I am in the right place, doing the right work. I am stretching and growing every day. I've caught the Cleveland Heights, University Heights bug. And we have lots of work to continue to do, there are definitely some goals that, you know, are within our sight, and I'm just, you know, the team is tremendous. I mean, really, really, I would never have been able to get, you know, so far ahead without all of, with everyone, you know, who sits behind me, you know, helping me, filling in the blanks, helping me problem solve, so we, we are in a really good, we are in a really good position as a district.
Well, it's great to hear that, and this is great, a great work product, and I know it's team-based. I mean, the team really had to step up to help you understand this.
Oh, yeah.
And I suspect the takeaways are all, like all your priorities, those are all, I would think, done in collaboration with the team.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, because that's how you, that's how you figure this stuff out.
Yeah.
So...
Yep. And so, this, and so from this, this presentation will be one of the products that the steering committee will be using as they now make, you know, help us make that decision in terms of how we wanna set up our next priorities in the 2025 plan.
So, when you do the State of the Schools, in, in the past, it's been just highlights, highlights and highlights, and like what we would've, like what we've done in our board meetings, you celebrate student success, you bring kids up front, and, you know, the community gets to listen to kids and hear kids sing and all that. I mean, what's your thought of the State of the Schools? You know, are you thinking of including any of this in your presentation?
Oh, yeah, this would be, this would definitely be a piece of the work, because I, because I actually have conducted a State of the Schools, that, you know, in the entry plan as well. And then, you know, I'll work with the team to see, and also, you know, board leadership to also see if there are particular elements that we wanna highlight, be important to raise, also for people to truly understand the district and where we are. But, you know, I, I believe a State of the School, you wanna really talk about the State of the Schools, right? So, so people know not only your successes, but also your areas where you know you need to grow, the things you're doing to push those forward as well.
Okay.
So, if there's nothing else, I do have one thing to end with.
Yes.
It's kinda like a, this is like a trailer, I would say.
Part two.
It's another Adam Do Productions world premiere.
It's a Do Cabin, Do Cabinaw production.
It's not quite complete yet.
Yes, so more to come on this one.
Let's begin.
I'm sorry.
And the winner of today's academic challenge, the team from Cleveland Heights.
Ice is fun.
Nice, that's great. You'll be seeing that more at our State of the Schools, but just wanted to, again, it captures about the students, you see that their diverse experiences and all the different things that they are, you know, able to do and enjoy to help them develop, so.
Love it.
Thank you all for your attention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your presentation.
Yes.
All right, just a few quick announcements, and then we will adjourn, but I wanna remind the board that we have a retreat this Saturday. So, I believe we noticed that for nine o'clock, so probably nine to one. So, please do your strength finders before. I think most of you have done, that's part of the kickoff, and then we're gonna talk about some of your plan for this, the strategic planning process, correct, Liz?
Oh, yes, so we'll have, there'll be two hours on board feedback.
Yeah, okay. And does anybody have anything else before we adjourn?
Today, the Heights Coalition for Public Education finally put a date on a presentation that they've been working to pull together, and it's, it is, basically, it's the State of School funding in Ohio, the possibilities and challenges of creating a solution, and it is gonna be, the, the big speaker is gonna be Ohio Representative John Patterson, who is half of Cup Patterson. John is a great guy who I know pretty well, he's a retired teacher from Ashtabula, and he, so obviously, his, his roots go pretty deep in public education in Ohio and trying very hard to solve the funding problem in Ohio. So, that is gonna be on Monday, February 10th at Heights High School, and...
What time?
At seven o'clock.
Okay.
So, we have, as you know, throughout the years, often sort of cosponsored events with the Coalition, we've done that with their book study groups in years gone by, we did that, I remember there was an event with, we're sort of helping people learn how to advocate, we called it, I think, something like developing your elevator speech, and the, you know, it's basically the cosponsorship was just us sort of advertising it through our channels, and so, I'm sort of hoping that we could step up and do that again. I think it certainly is gonna be a worthwhile and really interesting evening. John will be, I think folks will enjoy John's presentation style, he's a, he's a very good speaker.
I'm good with it.
I think that'd be great.
I think we absolutely should do it.
I mean, we, we have a precedent to doing it, and it's at the high school anyways, I mean, I think we're already indirectly cosponsoring it anyways.
Certainly, the habit has been that we've always, we've always done that, so. So, I will, maybe, Kaitlin, you can get in touch with the Heights Coalition and just find out what the, that'd be great.
That's really great news, that's just very, very impressive.
Mm-hmm. They, they wanted to get Cup and Patterson, but the dates just kept having to move further and further to get the two trains to cross at the same time.
So, Dan, I'm, I'm invited to a school board president's meeting on January 31st. I would like to either have flyers or something to pass out at that, I, I think it would be really great if we could get some of our other colleagues in other school districts there as well.
That'd be awesome, and I would encourage them to like the Heights Coalition for Public Education on Facebook. But I will certainly, there's something on Facebook I can ask to find out if there's a, a print flyer available.
And if not, I'll just, you know, I can just put something together, but I, I think it would be good for us to invite other local school boards and school board presidents or, you know, through their networks to, to come to this. I think if, if John Patterson is coming, we should pack the house.
And we should show him our high school.
Absolutely, absolutely, okay.
I have something.
Okay.
So, the OAS, supposed steering committee meeting set for tomorrow? I was gonna try to go to that, however, I've got a conflict. Do we know if Lindsay or anybody else is going to that?
Lindsay's there.
I assume Lindsay is, but we can double check that. Yeah, can we see if she's going? Because if she's not, I'll just make sure that I'm there, I'll just take the time off to do it.
Do it. I would go with you, but I can't.
I know.
It's really frustrating that these meetings are always during the workday where many board members work. I wish they would do these on a Saturday.
Yeah.
Well, at some point, the people who pay the bills via dues just need to tell them to start doing them on Saturday.
Well, yeah, it, it's just, it's two and a half hours to get there, two and a half hours to get in, and then an hour and a half meeting, a two-hour meeting, so there's your day.
Yeah, you can't get anything else done.
Absolutely does, I get it.
And it's important stuff, so.
Yes, I agree. So, here's a tiny announcement that is not hard work, but a lot of fun. Fairfax Elementary School is having their biennial cabaret on Friday, the 31st of January. It's a ton of fun, it's at the high school. Who knows what the kids will be doing this time, but it's always fabulous, and you can go early and eat, and they'll sell you delicious food for, as part of the fundraiser for Fairfax PTA, and then you can stay and watch the kids on stage, and it's always amazing. And it culminates in the, the staff dance, so the teachers at Fairfax always do the final number, and it's also fabulous.
Nice.
Fine.
I will actually be in Washington DC then for the Equity and Advocacy Conference for four days, so.
Cool.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to it, I have never attended this one.
So, you're gonna bring us back a summary of all the things we need to know, right?
You did that last year.
Absolutely.
You doing it again?
No, I, I got kids.
You found yourself with kids, did you?
All right, well, if there are no other announcements, do I have an emotion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Gainer, we call the roll.
Ms. Wright.
Yes.
Mr. Podge.
Yes.
Mr. Heinz.
Yes.
Ms. Serini.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.